Alrighty, first of all I want to say good evening to everyone. Prior to me commencing the actual city council meeting at this point, I will go ahead and read out two decisions that were made in closed session by the city council. The first one is the city council voted four zero for the management development to bring in a DDA, the council's for consideration. Number two, the city council voted four zero to direct the CEO to retain a professional search firm for the new police chief. But before I forget, and before I go on, just want to, first of all, acknowledge and thank Chief Mike Taylor, who has been with the Ballpark Police Department for thirty-seven years. I'd want to thank him and recognize him. I met Mike nineteen ninety-two, when he was a sergeant, lieutenant, and a captain and a police chief. So, Chief, and we're, want to hold something for you in January, as I stated, most likely the sixteenth. Hope you can make it to be able to recognize him for the legacy that he partook in the city of Ballpark. And I will say, he leads a history of quality work, and of course, mentorship for many of the officers here at the department. So on behalf of the city Ballpark, Chief, thank you very much for the unconditional service that you've brought to the city as well.
May I?
Yes, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
I'd also like to add to that, that Chief Mike Taylor, you've been an exemplary chief for many years. I know you've been working here as a chief, I think you, as you like to say, since your young adulthood, you've been here, working very hard, and you've gotten, took advantage of the education programs we've had here. You've gotten up to your PhD in your profession, so, and you have your master's degrees, your bachelor's degree, and all that while raising a family and working here, so. And you also did a lot of crime programs. I know early on, when I got in, you took care of a lot of the crime programs along Garvey Avenue, all the drug and prostitutions that were occurring there, and all those motels. And because of that, we were able to start, knock those down, that area, and bring in what's new, all the new development, the retail stores that are there today, you know, the Walmarts and the Home Depots, and all that was a part of you starting to clean that up, and then just continue to do all the work that you've done here within our community. So, but we'll recognize you again in January, and just want to thank you for your service.
Alrighty. Okay. Alright, thank you, thank you very much, and we look forward to that actual time. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to close the study session, that is my motion.
Second.
Who's second? Okay, second, second by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. Alright, though, at this point, I'd like to open up the, no, the, I'd like to open up the Ballpark City Council Special Meeting. Today's December the nineteenth, twenty eighteen. I'd like to open that concurrently also with the Finance Committee and the Housing Department. I think those are the only two that we have. So that is my motion.
Successor.
And successor agency as well. Okay, there's a second by Councilmember Avila as well. So at this point, we're gonna go ahead and go, start out with the invocation, so we'll have, I'm not certain, I thought I saw Pastor Jackson here, no? Is Pastor Flores here?
Yeah.
What's that? You don't want to do a combination before the end of the year? Come on, let's do a combination, before the end of the year. We need a prayer. Alright, so at this point, we'll have also Pastor Flores come up here, and I'll ask all those that are able to stand, please do so at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, for the honor and privilege, and just want to welcome the new council to this meeting as well, too. And remember Sister Monica Garcia's family, and those who have lost lives recently here in the city. Let's pray. Gracious God, we pause on the onset of this meeting to, to look to you, Lord, for our help. Lord, your word tells us that we look to the hills for our help, and our help comes from the Lord, the Creator of heaven and earth. Lord, we pray for our city. Lord, we, our city, in a sense that mourns the loss of lives recently, and yet at the same time, Lord, we seek healing and restoration, so we can move forward and continue to serve and serve your people with excellence. We thank you for our council and our new council members, Lord. We are grateful for those who participate in this leadership. May they always honor you and serving your people. We thank you for those that are present today, God, in this season where we're mindful of your love for us through Christ Jesus, Lord. May your blessing be upon these proceedings.
Amen. Pastor Jackson?
Heavenly Father, we come before you right now. This city, Baldwin Park, needs your help in hand, Lord. We're asking you, Lord, and touching the city council, Lord God, police department, fire department, school department, businesses, Lord, give us wisdom and knowledge and understanding in how to govern the city and to make great decisions and to betterment the city. Lord God, things are happening within our city once again, and we tear down the strongholds, we tear down the gang situation and violence, Lord God, the drug situation, Lord God. We're asking to put your mighty hand upon the businesses that they would flourish, Lord God. Our police department, and giving them safety as they are out in the streets, doing their duty, protecting and serving our citizens, Lord God. We ask these things in the master's name of the Lord Jesus Christ, and we say, we need you, we need your mighty hand. So come, Lord, touch our city, Baldwin Park. In the name of the Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor Flores and Pastor Jackson. At this point, we're gonna salute to the flag, so I'll ask everyone to please remain standing, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Before I do the closure, I want to go ahead and do roll call, then I'll go ahead. Thank you. So at this point, we'll have our city treasurer, Maria Contreras, that will lead us in the actual.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos, y bienvenidos. Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Present.
Mayor pro tem, Monica Garcia.
She is out, so at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion to move to allow her.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Here, present, thank you. So at this point, thank you very much. So at this point, I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Monica Garcia, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia. Is there a second?
I second.
Second, any objections? Seeing none, so move. Alright, so at this point, want to also, we'll close on behalf of Vice Mayor Monica Garcia, her dad, a very dear friend of mine as well, born October twenty-third, nineteen fifty-one, in El Paso, Texas, passed away December the twelfth of this year. So our deepest condolences goes out to Vice Mayor Monica Garcia, and Sam, who was a really special individual, a friend, who not only contributed immensely to Ballpark as well, owning his shop here in Ballpark, and bringing the family to Ballpark as well. So on behalf of the city Ballpark, I want to wish our condolences to the family, and I look forward to a letter to them as well. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may also just read at the funeral of the, of Monica's father, Samuel Garcia Jr., has a beautiful poem on the back of the funeral card. I just wanted to read it in memory of her father, and it reads, "The broken chain, we little knew that day God was going to call your name. In life we loved you dearly, in death we do the same. It broke our hearts to lose you, you did not go alone, for part of us went with you. The day God called you home, you left us beautiful memories. Your love is still your guide, and although we cannot see you, you are always at our side. Our family chain is broken, and nothing seems the same, but as God calls you, God calls us one by one, the chain will link again." And this is in memory of Monica Garcia's Vice Mayor of the city, father, Sam Garcia Jr. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Yes, at this point, Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. Just, again, just want to echo the kind words that both you and the rest of the staff here. Knowing Mr. Garcia for quite some time, he certainly will leave a legacy behind here in our community, and as a man who has given quite, quite of, not only his soul, but his heart, to his family and to the community. So again, just want to recognize him, and of course, Councilmember Garcia for their loss, but again, it's his spirit that lives on in each and every one of us, and the impacts that he's made on each of us, especially myself, are everlasting. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Councilmembers?
Yes. I also like to extend my condolences to the Garcia family. I know Monica's mom for many years, Rachel Garcia, and her granddaughter works with me, Victoria Garcia, and it was actually very devastating to hear the news and the reaction, everything that's going on with the family, so my condolences to the Garcia family.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councilmembers. Alright, before we go on, I want to recognize our new assigned battalion chief from the East Regional Operations Bureau, Mr. Mike Eman. Thank you very much, Mr. Eman. Thank you for being here this evening as well. We look forward to working with you as well. So at this point, councilmembers, have anything or any type of announcements they wish to share?
Mayor, just want to thank the P O A for the wonderful job they did.
Oh, yes.
All the employees got together and did a number of, get a Christmas program and gave away a lot of gifts to all the community, and I just want to thank you for the outstanding job you did, and also for the Walmart program that staff put together, they went to Parks and Rec. They did a good job there, too. So thanks, staff, for all your Christmas gifts you gave to the community.
Yes, thank you very much. How many gifts were given out for the chief, for the toy drive? Did we mention Walmart?
Well, we had a truck parked in front of Walmart, our SWAT truck. We have an event that we do a couple of days a year or more. It's called Stuff the SWAT Truck. So people that come out of Walmart or Target, wherever it's parked, with toys, they stuff the truck with a free toy for underprivileged children, they get a picture with the cops, and they get to climb in the truck, so. We got that, and then the Christmas with the cops event, which all of you, I believe, attended, and you saw it was a pretty huge event. I'm guessing somewhere in the neighborhood of about three to four thousand people attended. We gave away more toys this year than we did last year, and then last year, we gave away more toys than we did the year before. So every year, it kind of grows exponentially as the word gets out. I'd like to thank the school district that's here, and Parks and Rec, and all the other people that help us get the word out, especially our religious leaders in the community. They were a big help in getting the word spread out to their flacks, who then again spread the word, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And again, recognize and thank Walmart for also contributing to the, literally, what, I think it was four hundred, four hundred? Am I right, or three hundred?
Three hundred.
Three hundred, three hundred and what?
Three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty youth that were out there, so we all were out there helping them shop away. So it was great. So I want to thank, thank the Ballpark Police Department, thank the Park and Recs, Manny Carrillo, your staff, and all the businesses that partook in that particular area. Thank you, city attorney, as well.
Also, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
If I could just mention the Techniques Car Club, they were a big donor of bicycles that we gave away in a raffle. I certainly didn't want to forget them. And then our Santa Claus from the Edison Credit Union, I certainly don't want to forget, George, so I just want to say thanks to those people personally.
They also donated Christmas trees to the families. Also, Manny and all your staff, thank you for the Can-Fu drive that you did, along with the school district.
Yes.
This last Saturday, we had a, how many families did we have coming to pick up?
Four hundred families.
We had four hundred families coming to the park to pick up their dinner for the holidays. It was a wonderful event. We always collaborate with the school district, so thank you for all of those of you who donated.
Alrighty, thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. Any other announcements? No? Alright, so at this point, the first presentation that we have, Mr. Reyes, he, I was informed that he is not in today, so he will be rescheduled for a future meeting as well. Just, okay. And real quick, before I go on, I want to just make an announcement, as required by government code, section five four nine five two point three, members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of thirty dollars for attending the Housing Authority meeting, and fifty dollars for attending the Finance Authority meeting. So, thank you very much, city attorney. Alright, so at this point, I'm gonna go over to the retirement recognition for Ballpark Police Officer, Mr. James R. Colback. So, Mr. Colback, is he here?
He's right there.
Oh, alright. So let's go ahead and stand right there first at the lecture, and then we'll bring you up here. Do we have the bio for Mr. Colback?
Yeah, it's on the plaque.
Should be, oh, it's written on the plaque. Okay, alright, so that's, that's cool. Alright, let me ring it out here. So, I'll read this before we bring him up here, which reads, "James R. Colback, Police Officer, City of Ballpark, in recognition of your outstanding thirty-two years of service with the Ballpark Police Department, and your commitment to the residents, community members, colleagues, and all the families you help. The city council thanks you for your dedication and wish you a prosperous future and happy retirement." But before you come up here, just want to let everyone know that Officer James Colback was definitely an exemplary officer, a part of this community, and extremely loved by a lot of residents in Ballpark, that he literally reached out to, not only in the community, but throughout the schools, so just want to say that you've done a phenomenal job, and we'll never forget your contribution to the city of Ballpark. These thirty-two years is a long time, and of course, you've done a lot of positive things that we'll never forget, so thank you on behalf of the city of Ballpark. Alright, so at this point, we'll have him come up here, present him the plaque. You gonna bring your family up here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Sorry about that, Chief. Yes, sir.
That's okay. In addition to the plaque, I see that James has brought his wife, Terry, and his four boys, I think it's Jeremy, Joshua, Jared, and Joe, his four boys. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you know what, get on another mic. What's that with that mic?
Testing, one, two, three. How's that? Thank you. Yeah, a question to the, Mr. Mayor, a question to the plaque that you've got, we have a little present for Jim.
Oh.
It's, this is what we call, it's a tradition in law enforcement, and it's called a shadow box. And what the shadow box does is, it's kind of a snapshot of his entire career, over thirty-one, thirty-two years that Jim has worked for the police department. And we offer that him as a gift of remembrance for the fine work that he's done with our department, and all the different assignments that he's had. There's a little plaque on there, Mr. Mayor, if you'd read it, please.
Let's move it up.
Your eyesight's a little bit better than mine.
I don't know about that one.
If they saw that in the mirror, can you read that, Mr. Mayor?
Let me put my glasses on, absolutely.
Yes.
Alright, so it reads, "With over thirty-one years of service," we present this shadow box to Officer Jim Colback for his dedication to duty, his commitment to serve, and the fulfillment of his pledge to the citizens of Ballpark and the Ballpark Police Department. Congratulations, December twelfth, nineteen eighty-six, to October sixth, twenty eighteen."
Awesome.
Alright, we're gonna have some words. Come on up here.
Can I have you, it's hopefully won't turn off.
Go back, sir. Go ahead. The mic's yours. Oh, here, I'll hold that, I'll hold that, here.
I just want to thank you. It's been an adventure working here. I was here over half of my life, so a lot, a lot of great things have happened here. A lot of, I taught the DARE program for three years, so a lot of kids will come up to me as adults and say, "You're my DARE teachers." Thank you.
This is my wife, Terry, and my, two of my four sons, Joshua and Jared.
Can I take a few pictures? First one. Better shot. Parks. One. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Thank you very much. 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 Thank you very much, right here, sir. Thank you very much. 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 Oh, yes. I remember him as, going to his parking. Alright, so the next one that we have. Okay, the next item that we have here is a Housing Department presentation. So who is hosting this? Thank you very much. Measurement, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. It's my pleasure, as your newly installed Community Development Director, to give you this presentation tonight. Although I've been at the post, although I've been at the post only a few weeks, again, it's a privilege to give you this presentation. I would consider these comments, because my early amount of time here is preliminary. As we move along, and I'm able to assess staffing levels, get to know the community better, and mature in my position, I look forward to future discussions on housing. I wanted to recognize the housing, just quickly, the housing staff. They don't come to council meetings very often. Could you just stand, led by Susie Dureles?
Thank you very much. The housing, the housing division does a quiet job daily of doing what we tend to call God's work in the industry, because housing people and helping people with housing is very difficult work, and it takes not only intelligence and hard work and dedication, but also a lot of heart. So I want to thank them. We have a number of housing, so we have a number of housing programs and projects in the city, and one of the slides that didn't, didn't make it up here, it appears, is the fact that currently, the city of Baldwin Park does have over a thousand affordable housing types of units in the city. So the city does have an established record of providing affordable housing to first-time homebuyers, home improvement rehabilitation loans. We've utilized the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. We helped build the Metro Village, this beautiful project right here next to City Hall. We own and manage the McNeil Manor for senior citizens, and there's also a number of HUD administered units, such as Ramona Park, Frazier Park, Syracuse Park. These are other projects that are, reside in our city, that are in our city. We do not oversee them, but they do provide affordable housing to our, to our residents. So the idea of, I believe, of this discussion, and as we move forward, is to grow our affordable housing program in the future, but we already have a lot to be proud of. And here's a few pictures of what, of what those, some of those projects look like. Just as a quick reminder, before we get into housing, there's a lot of rules and regulations when we do housing, and when we work with HUD programs. And so this slide just talks a little bit about how we need to always make sure we're in compliance with federal, state, and state regulations. There's plans and reports, environmental reviews, annual audits, there's project oversight, including prevailing wage, Davis-Baking compliance reviews, procurement compliance, and administration of loan portfolios, and that's the, that's the day-to-day work that the housing staff does for us. The CDBG program, I think we're mostly familiar, we're all mostly familiar with the Community Development Block Rec program. As we know, we've used it in the past for, like many states, we've used it in the past for a number of programs, but we can use it for housing rehab, and we can also use it for new development. The home program is also another HUD program, can also be used for affordable housing. When we do that, we need to commit the money within two years and spend it within five years, so we need to make sure that when we do projects, that we do them in a diligent fashion. Leftover from our redevelopment agency days, we also have some housing set-aside funds, what we used to call set-aside funds, available, and those can assist up to low and moderate income families, and we can use those for a number of programs as well. We also administer the density bonus projects in our city that don't, don't involve any funding, but do provide affordable housing. Before coming to the city of Baldwin Park, I used to always read and hear about the Baldwin Park Housing Authority. It's kind of an honor and privilege to be here, now working with the city and seeing it firsthand. The city of Baldwin Park, for those that don't know that, know it, administers a Section Eight housing program for the city of Baldwin Park, Monrovia, West Covina, Elmani, South Elmani, and Covina. Currently, there are four hundred and forty-four households being serviced through the Section Eight voucher program. A hundred and eighteen are Baldwin Park households, and two hundred and thirty-eight are elderly households. We have a waiting list of two thousand applicants with eighteen, around eighteen hundred pending, and over three hundred and fifty of those residents are from Baldwin Park. We also administer a minimal amount of project-based units in the city of Covina, and we also provide annual inspections to ensure compliance for all the units that we service. As I, as, I as director, and moving forward, and analyzing the department along with the city manager, we're gonna be looking at many things. One of them is the Baldwin Park Housing Authority payment standards. HUD provides flexibility in how we apply these payment standards, and generally speaking, we can provide more flexibility, pay more rent, and, and this might attract more landlords to the program. But also, we need to also take into consideration the quality of the housing that's being provided. So this is one of many, many factors that we're gonna be looking at as we move forward in, in addressing the program. Measure H, so our friends over at the Parks and Community Services Department, and I see Eurico here, and President and staff from that department, they spearheaded an effort to get a fifty thousand dollar planning grant in two thousand sixteen. And this plan involves stakeholder meetings and community support, and it developed a citywide homeless plan aligning the Baldwin Park with the Los Angeles Homeless Initiative strategies. The goals of the grant involve coordinating local efforts to respond to homelessness, prevent individuals and family from becoming homeless, connect case management and local services, expand access to workforce development programs to increase employment, and explore opportunities to increase the number of units. Because of this excellent work done by the Parks and Community Services, along with the housing staff and the Community Development Department, we have many opportunities that now will be afforded to the city of Baldwin Park in the future. I am gonna mention a few here. I know they're hard to read, but just to go over them quickly, the Los Angeles County Homeless Plan Implementation Grant, we just recently submitted two applications in December. We, one of the applications is a city micro level, and the other one is a macro level, where we will attempt to partner with our neighboring cities of Elmani, South, and South Elmani, and we will be looking at increasing the supply of interim and permanent housing for people experiencing homelessness. So we're hopeful that we're gonna get these grants, and this will begin to bolster our staffing and levels to help us, you know, address homelessness. Heap funding is another grant opportunity that was just released. We haven't even had a chance to apply to it yet, but this will allow us to look at rapid rehousing and prevention services, and also interim housing services. It's all about keeping people off the streets. It's as simple as that. There, you know, there's all kinds of terminology and... There, you know, there's all kinds of terminology and alphabet soup that we have here in this world of housing, but really, we just have to remember, all we're trying to do is keep people, individuals and families, especially children, off the streets. There's also the San Gabriel Valley COG, which is interested in creating a regional housing trust fund, and so, we're talking to them about the potential, potentiality of that. I personally have been involved in the development of hundreds of affordable housing units throughout my career, so it'll be my honor as your new Community Development Director to work in this community and share my knowledge and what I've learned. A lot of this, this is a list of the types of affordable housing funds that are available and financing programs that are available. I've used several of them in my, in my career. Affordable housing is not easy. Like I said, it's, we call it God's work, because it's not easy. It takes a team, it takes dedication, and as I sit here, a month into the job, I'm seeing that I think we may have the potentiality to really tackle this problem, because we have all the missing pieces. I'll get into those a little later. But just to talk about some of the tools out there, we have the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program. That's called the Cap and Trade Program. So, that's something that we are very happy, in the affordable housing field, that Governor Brown solidified that program in the beginning part of this year. And so, that's going to provide a steady supply of affordable housing funding for affordable housing in the future. SB 2 is, provides technical assistance to local governments to update planning documents and zoning ordinances. Proposition 1 and 2 provide, well, Proposition 1 provides programs for new development and rehab. Proposition 2 provides housing for, funds for housing for those with mental illness at risk of being homeless. The Choice Neighborhoods Program is a HUD program, and this is going to be coming out in two phases, a planning grant and implementation grant. And it takes a look, it's kind of looking at neighborhoods holistically and making sure that if we, if and when we invest in housing, that we have also public services, health and safety, and active transportation in the area. So, that's something that could be a very nice fit for our, our community, and our grant writer that works with us will, will be taking a look at that program. We have 4% and 9% tax credit allocation committee tax credits. Again, all this stuff should be foreign to you. I don't think we've done a lot of this in this city, but, but again, I have personally in other cities. These are excellent tools that we can, these, this is the equity. See, when you build a project, when you build affordable housing, it's like anything. Someone's got to put money in to make it work at the beginning. And so, these 4% and 9% tax credits, these are the equity that drive a project. And then later, we get the temporary financing or the bank financing for the construction. But this 4% and 9% programs that have been around for decades, these are the things that really make it happen. And I'm giving you a very quick overview. I'd love to talk about this in more detail and show examples, but I think tonight's just meant to be more of a quick presentation. The other thing is, we do have some land resources. So, we have, we can make city residual receipt loans, which basically means that we can, instead of gifting land to a developer, we can loan, or provide the land to the developer, but also on a, on a loan basis that if and when residual receipts come back from the project, that the city is paid back for the land. We're also going to look at the Los Angeles Community Development Commission that has a number of resources. Oh, here's our housing portfolio. I thought it was in the beginning of the presentation, it's more towards the end. So, there's a, there's a list to be proud of, over 1,000 units, and we can talk about those more in the future. But we've already, we have already provided a lot of affordable housing in the city Baldwin Park. And just to end, our Housing Division has been recognized in multiple ways. HUD has asked us to be a panel speaker at Innovative Development of Affordable Housing Workshop. We're commonly referred. HUD refers other cities to us to seek best practices for home and CDBG projects. Our staff does have all the laundry list of staff certifications here, and we've been awarded a number of projects by the California Housing Association, and we're also recognized by the City Council for multiple-year high-performing rating agency. So, what we've done with our Section 8 program and other HOPE programs has been recognized by HUD as being very high-quality and administered in a very professional manner. And I can tell you, that's not the case in all cities, having worked in many cities. I'm going to close my, my, my presentation, my comments, by just saying that there's four kind of parameters to doing anything in a city, but especially affordable housing. To get affordable housing done, you need, you need a good economy, because in a good economy, more taxes are generated, and that creates more housing resources for affordable housing. So, we're still in a good economy. You need to have the technical staff and know-how to get affordable housing done. I think, I think we're getting there. I think with the, the work that the Parks and Community Services Department has done to date, Housing Division staff has done to date, and, and yours truly here that's ready to roll up the sleeves and get to work on affordable housing and other matters, I think we're starting to get close to having the technical staff to get this done. We also have to have a supportive community, though, because without a supportive community, affordable housing is impossible. And we also have to have political will. So, if we can put those four pieces together, I can assure you, because I've seen it in the past, that affordable housing will happen in the city of Baldwin Park. Thank you, and I can, here to answer any questions, or, or pass the questions to other technical staff if need be. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Council members, have any questions? All right, yes, Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ben. Excellent presentation. Just a quick question, if you can, perhaps, in early January or in so forth, can you perhaps just bring back the draft citywide homeless plan? I just want, I want to make sure that that plan is incorporating not only the various subcategories that you have for the HEAP program, but that we're also incorporating the, the school district into our application as we're doing that and as we're creating the master plan. Because as you've stated earlier, you have quite a bit of students that are potential for homeless risk and so forth, so, if that's something we can do. And then, in regards to the rehabilitation program, I know you didn't speak too much on that, but that would be somewhere, if we could perhaps look at expanding or adding more funding towards that, because we can then look as a citywide towards individuals on fixed incomes to help beautify their homes or assist their homes that might be in dilapidated manner, or whatever the case might be in that sense. But those are just considerations for, for you and the rest of your, your team to look at. But if we can certainly discuss some of that stuff in, back in January, you know, and again, in regards, based on the timeline of your application, we'd like to see what that is before we submit that, if possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, Councilmember Avila.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation. I look forward to meeting with you so we can discuss further. I don't have the name of the place at this time, but I know in Pasadena, they have affordable housing. I just visited. I can't recall the name, but it was beautiful. You would have never known it was affordable housing. And in that affordable housing, they have the rehabilitation program for the families that are homeless, and they come here and they get a training, they provide babysitting for the families, homework assistance. So, it's a full program, not only for them to have a place to live, but also to get them trained so they can get on their feet. So, they start off maybe at a minimal rent due, and then they start basing it based on their income. So, I look forward to working with you. I will bring that program to you so we can talk about it. Maybe we can bring something like that to our community and involve our school district, like Paul said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Yes, from the Director of Housing. Can you go back to where you, you kind of went through that, that slide quickly where it showed how many housing pro, there you go, that one. So, the first-time homebuyer programs, how many are actually successful? Do you have any, any stats on that? I know people apply, but, or is that the number of actual?
Yes, that is the number of first-time homebuyers that we have assisted, but it probably, the number probably goes back in quite a number of years.
Okay. So, it doesn't reflect current 20?
Yeah, we, we haven't, the, the first-time homebuyer program ebbs and flows, because in today's market right now, it doesn't make a lot of sense. But in a, in a different market, it does. So, that number represents going back probably at least 10 years or so, the number of first-time homebuyers we've assisted.
Okay. And about, how many affordable units you say we have total?
At the bottom there, it's, I, overall, over 1,000.
1,000, okay. All right. And is there an interest from developers to continue to do family affordable housing, or is, or is the market different right now?
Absolutely. Right now, as of, with all the new housing resources, now is a great time, and developers are interested. I, I don't think they know, and we need to vocalize our interest to them. I think, I can tell you, that's number one. And then, land resources are always difficult, but that's, that's just part of the puzzle we need to solve.
Okay. And does the city still have funding to help out in those types of projects?
Yes, we, we do have home funds available and CDBG funds available for, in particular, home funds available for affordable housing.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I just want to say real quick that I think a good example of affordable type of housing is this project, the Metro Village. It's unfortunate, once the administration changed in the White House, funds were cut, or else we would have continued on with an additional one. And of course, there's a necessity for, for, for housing, and we know that. There's a shortage throughout the county. So, Baldwin Park, doesn't make Baldwin Park unique, there just, there just simply is a necessity for this, well, for that matter, throughout the state of California, all 58 counties. All right. So, at this point, any other questions? Okay, if not, we're going to go ahead and do the following presentations before we get into the public communication. The next one is Baker Associates Public Art Advisory, Baldwin Park, Digital Marquee Presentation. Is that to change out the marquee?
No, no, Mayor.
Is that the marquee throughout the city, then?
No, this is an update to a new project currently in our CIP. This is for, just giving you an update on a project that entails an overarching, over-the-street sign that includes a public art component to it.
Beautiful.
So, it's a, it's a sign that is envisioned to go over the street with an e-reader or marquee-type sign. Tonight, there is no action being requested from the council. We would just like to introduce the public art team. They have put together a presentation, and they will be discussing some thoughts on their approach. There is a lot of community involvement that is planned for this project, and we're planning to, in the, in these community meetings, bring in a lot of local public artists to help out and sort of inform the project. But I'd like to hand it over to Claudia and Franca, who will be discussing their approach to the project.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor.
Good evening, residents of Baldwin Park. So, we are here tonight, my name is Claudia Weisenberger.
My name is Franca DiNell.
Together, we form Merge Conceptual Design, art practice focused on public art. We are working on this project together with Beatrice Parker from Parker Public Art Advisory. Unfortunately, Beatrice is sick today, so there's two parts to our presentation. The first one, we will be presenting on behalf of Beatrice, and then the second one is showing some reference projects that illustrate our approach to public art, and also our approach to, to collaboration with community in various forms. And hopefully, that can give you a little bit of an idea of how we will plan to approach this project. Just briefly, as Sam already introduced, the project was brought to us as basically a gateway project for Baldwin Park. The idea is that there is multiple elements that should be integrated into this gateway, but the gateway would not simply be a sign for Baldwin Park, it would have a public art component. So, here are just some examples that, you know, don't necessarily reflect, or do not reflect what we're proposing for the site, but just different ideas of, of how other communities have approached similar topics. A gateway can always, you know, create pride in a neighborhood, it is a front door to a city, and so, it's, it gives an important first impression of where people have arrived. This is, you know, including art in, in any of such projects obviously enhances this from a simple signage-type of project into something quite a bit more appealing and meaningful, and that can also really represent a community spirit on various levels. One piece that was to be integrated into this project is also a digital marquee that can be used for conveying information related to the city. So, there's obviously many different ways of, you know, working with digital information as well. Then, this is a presentation that was put together by the Public Works Department to just, you know, also show like, okay, this is, this is the type of situation we are trying to create, but we are trying to incorporate public art. So, these samples do not incorporate public art, but they are similar gateway situations. And so, our, you know, project considerations are really to think about how can we meaningfully represent the city in, in such a marquee? Who is our core audience? And I think an important kind of outreach component for us will be to really try to understand what are the, you know, the stories that can influence the design, what is the unexpected, the interesting, the fun, the meaningful that can represent the community. And then, obviously, also, we'll have to examine spatial relationships of the marquee to its physical surroundings. It would be a rather large structure if it spans a multi-lane street, so there will be engineering involved, and definitely needs sophisticated design also on a structural So far, we've discussed several location options with the Public Works Department. One of the kind of preferred ones seemed to be on Ramona Boulevard, maybe between Main Avenue and Bogart Avenue. We also discussed Ramona Boulevard between Syracuse and Derby, and then Main Avenue between Los Angeles Street and Clark Street, and Baldwin Park Boulevard between Tracy Avenue and Francis Kito Avenue. So, that would be something to examine more in the next step to, and then also, you know, work with community and with you to, to pinpoint a location. Also depends a little bit on, you know, the, the scale and budget numbers to see whether, you know, we have the potential of creating two related markers or just one. So, the, the, there are different spatial configurations we discussed. There will be LED sign, then also, you know, a more kind of explicit font that says "City of Baldwin Park," but then, an important element will be public art, which is not represented in this drawing yet. So, there's different ways of working with spatial relationships between those elements. One possibility would be to actually create the digital sign, kind of as a vertical element next to the more this welcoming arch that will span the street. And so, as we're going into the second part of our presentation, we'll be showing several projects that we've worked on as public artists, so now, now comes kind of the public art side into the whole equation. And we've laid out kind of a process to engage with the community. One thing that we always find very important in our work as public artists is to have, you know, really meaningful dialogue with the community to identify what really can be, you know, a contribution in this context. And so, we will need, obviously, to keep working with the Public Works Director to identify who are the key stakeholders, the community groups, specific people that we should contact this, who might have particular knowledge or particular, you know, a particular weight and input into this project. project. Um, so this, we will establish a working group, which would be a core group of stakeholders, but then also create like an open, um, kind of an open, uh, strategy to, to plan community meetings, to invite the general public to, um, you know, give input to the project and and for us to learn about the community. An important piece for us will be to really try to understand who are, who are potential artists in the community that we could collaborate with. Um, we will show some, some, uh, images in a moment where we've worked with artists in, in various communities and, and various levels. This is a large scale piece, uh, and it needs a, you know, it needs a certain experience to, to create, uh, a, a public art piece of that scale that can, um, you know, be structurally sound, that, uh, that can be fabricated in a timely manner, but at the same time, we really welcome input from, from people that may not have the, uh, the expertise in, in these type of public art pieces, but, but could still contribute, uh, contribute in a different way. One piece that we've also done in the past is to actually work, uh, with schools and schoolchildren, uh, to either try to help us identify topics, or even, even in some fabrication, um, aspects of, uh, projects, and we'll, we'll show examples. But here comes the fun part.
I'm for the fun part. So this is a project we did in San Jose, it's for, uh, for several, like twenty, um, bus stations, and, um, so the, we designed like the overarching like, uh, theme for the art piece, and then, um, so there were actually ten stations, always two shelters in the different directions. For each one has a different theme, um, each one of these stations always has a floor, like a wall and the ceiling, and it was really important for us to reach out to the community and find these very special stories about the community, so that the community feels like really that their stories are told. And for us as public artists, it helps incredible to find these identity point, because it helps with maintenance. Uh, like you have less graffiti and less other things if you find that voice and that, uh, story what is, um, what gets reflected. So this is like, for instance, one community outreach we had in San Jose was, um, to a Portuguese, uh, senior center where the ladies showed us how to, uh, do crochet, and, um, later that crochet work was applied in the station itself. Or like this was, um, next to the station was an African-American church, and so the hats of the ladies were photographed and then it, uh, displayed at the station. And this was because, uh, San Jose is the capital of the lowriders, this was close to a, a center of lowriding, and so we, uh, had an outreach, um, to artists there, and actually the ceiling in that station is done by, uh, with car paint, uh, by one of the artists, uh, of, um, the lowrider community. And this is the station for the, um, Heritage Museum there, so we found an artist who was really good in Papel Picado, and were able to, um, get his art, uh, transferred into a large Papel Picado, but then got into the, in like, as you see again, like into the concrete, into the glass, and into the, um, aluminum ceiling there.
A, a project we, uh, did a few years ago in La Puente at Allen J Martin Park, uh, it's a quite different project here, our task was to just kind of create an oval, uh, color concept, uh, for the park. It, it previously was kind of this gray brown park, and, you know, had a lot of problems with graffiti, so we really wanted to turn around the atmosphere of that park and, and ended up choosing very bright colors, actually in collaboration with the community, uh, who was, you know, quite, quite ready to embrace, uh, a much brighter color scheme. And we created this, uh, scheme of circles, because we noticed that there were already, uh, a, a bunch of circular elements in the park, and so, uh, created this kind of cheerful pattern, applied circles, uh, throughout the park, and then worked with, um, actually, uh, worked with, with the community to identify which colors as associated with what type of elements, like pink would be, you know, a heart, or rose, or candy, or cheerleader. And so we came, uh, the, the kids came up with these different icons, we created stencils, uh, out of these icons, and then applied stencils together with, uh, with, uh, teenagers, uh, in that local community to these different circles. So there was a certain, uh, certain rules they had to follow, and, you know, which stencils, uh, applied with which colors to which circles, but it was actually quite a, quite a fun day. Uh, and, um, one, one part of our strategy was there, uh, there was also to, um, uh, keep those stencils and, and keep using the, uh, pattern of the circle to, to work with, you know, whenever they needed to overcoat graffiti, which, uh, the graffiti problem actually declined quite a bit, uh, after, after we completed this, uh, paint project. So, um, I think that's that. And then just lastly, I think there's, uh, two, uh, quick project that we wanted to show, that, that show kind of archway situations, even though quite different than, uh, a gateway would be to the City of Baldwin Park, but, uh, you know, big sculptural pieces that we've completed. Um, this one is in Scottsdale on a road over, uh, Roarhead Wash, and it's this series of, uh, of arches that are bent and twisted and, and create kind of an interesting pattern as, as people go through it or drive under it, um, bringing kind of an awareness over this wash that is actually kind of hard to see from the street.
And this is a, uh, was a project in downtown Los Angeles where we, um, cladded a bridge in a way with, uh, um, glass, and, uh, you would not think that it's glass, actually, and, uh, there is, um, what is it called, like a?
It's a reflective traffic film.
It's a reflective traffic film, and it's done in such a manner that, uh, it's, um, like when you drive in the car, the, uh, the horses actually start to gallop over it because of, um, how we fragmented the picture in itself, what you don't see when you actually right in front of it. So it's a little bit a mirage and it plays with you when you actually drive. And so we were also thinking of, uh, the big, um, gateway project here in a way is like, you have, there are all these different kind of perceptions, how you approach, approach at gateway, it's like you walk by, you drive by, you are high in the car, you are lower in the car. So that's all needs to, uh, be thought of by creating that art piece.
So you can see it a little bit here, the strategy of having, basically it's an elliptical illusion, you have these different motion sta- stages of, of a horse overlapping, and as you drive through, you see a different mo- motion stage every time, and so, uh, the image appears to, to, you know, the horses appear to run, basically. Um, the reason why we chose the horse, that was actually a part of our, our, um, um, beginning kind of starting point was that there was a desire, since this is a, a kind of a gateway into Chinatown, to use an image, uh, from the Chinese zodiac. So the developer chose, uh, that we wanted to do something with horses, and so that's, that's, uh, what became of it.
That's the end of the presentation.
All righty, thank you very much. Council members have any questions? That, I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to meeting up again, because I, I think it's exciting for us to be able to blend this type of, um, uh, project throughout the community, of course, uh, through the entrance and through the exits. So thank you very much. All righty, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we have no further presentations, so at this point, I will open up the public hearing. Uh, anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes. Good evening. Thanks, Dave.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, Staff and Residents. My name is Robert Cruz, I'm the Public Affairs Manager for the Southern California Gas Company, covering the city of Baldwin Park. As you know, SoCal Gas distributes natural gas to the many residents and businesses in Baldwin Park, allowing them an affordable, reliable and abundant energy source to heat their homes and businesses, to cook their meals and heat their water. It is the energy of choice for most of us and is part of a balanced energy portfolio and which your constituents enjoy. I am here tonight to raise your awareness of an ongoing issue in California which many people are unaware. California wants to electrify everything and upset this balanced portfolio. A recent proposal, Assembly Bill thirty-two thirty-two, which should not pass the legislature this year, would have required all new buildings built after twenty twenty-two to be all electric, and would have required existing buildings to be retrofitted to be all electric by twenty thirty. While it did not pass, you can be assured that a similar proposal will be forthcoming in the future. The proposals to, are to force you to electrify your home and being, and are being made in the name of global warming, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and carbon emissions. While this is very admirable, a cost benefit analysis can't justify such a drastic action, and customers are the ones who will pay. Please think about how much you pay for electricity every summer as you heat, at, for your heating bills in this, in the winter, your electric bills in the summer. Now imagine what your bills would be if your homes or businesses were all electric to do all those things. For example, it would cost seventy-two hundred dollars to retrofit buildings for new electric appliances, which does not include the cost of new appliances, that's just to retrofit your home or, or, or business. Your utility bills will probably go up by three hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which would be an increase in your electric bills, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Let me be clear, though, SoCal Gas does not oppose electricity. If you want to use only electric appliances or drive an electric vehicle, that's your choice, but don't make, take away that choice from those who want to offer other sources of energy. I'm alerting you that the balance is threatened, and with it, the economic stability of families and businesses could be threatened, forcing homeowners to place their natural gas appliances. There is an alternative, biogas renewable natural gas is available now. We're putting renewable gas into our, uh, basically C N G stations, which I believe the city is, has one, as well as other companies are now using renewable natural gas. The point is, you shouldn't have to choose between what some decision makers in California believe to be, is right, in terms of what your families can afford. If just sixty percent of the gas we deliver to customers comes from renewable gas, it will have the same effect on greenhouse gas emissions as it electrifying all of California, and by achieving the same goal. Thank you very much for your attention. Feliz Navidad y un prospero año nuevo.
Thank you, Robert, nice to see you, my friend.
Good to see you too, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mula, with public communication, you have three minutes. Thank you, good evening, sir.
Good evening, uh, my name is Robert Torres, I'm a resident of West Covina. I'm here just to summarize a, a criminal incident that happened, uh, essentially to inform you, on, uh, November twenty-seventh, at the new L A Fitness, uh, my wife's purse was stolen, uh, and from discussions with the manager there, uh, it's an often occurrence at that L A Fitness. Um, I know that's a new development and we frequent it often, but ever since that incident, we've, uh, kind of shied away, especially my wife. So I did reach out to Shannon, the city manager, uh, I was also contacted by Sergeant Patino and Detective Villalobos, so I did file a police report with my wife. They were very helpful and I appreciate all the assistance thus far. Uh, I just wanted to come here to let you know about the incident, and I know that, um, it happens often. I know it discourages residents and visitors from patronizing businesses in Baldwin Park. Uh, I know that, uh, you welcome and appreciate the feedback, so that's also why I came. Uh, so my hope, uh, is essentially for the person to hopefully be arrested. Um, once he stole the purse, he purchased seven hundred, I think around seven hundred dollars, uh, from the neighboring Food for Less and Target. So there is a paper trail because he used a credit card, and in discussions with, uh, the detective, he said he'll be able to identify the footage and hopefully, uh, find some leads and identify the person. So, um, in closing, I, I just think the ultimate goal is to eventually create a more inviting, uh, and safer environment for residents and visitors, uh, and consequently, uh, continue revitalizing the commercial and residential areas, because minor crimes like this, um, major minor crimes sometimes might not give in, uh, the same attention as felonies, but I think it deters a lot of people from visiting Baldwin Park. Um, so I appreciate your attention tonight, and I plan to keep you apprised of the investigation in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. All righty, hello, good evening.
Hi. Hi, good evening, uh, my name is Elvian Arango, and I'm here with a group of parents representing, uh, Foster Elementary from Baldwin Park, um, right across from the L A Fitness, as he just mentioned. Um, we are here today, and we're gathered today to express our point of view with this new construction site at the seven eleven and a gas station only ninety-seven adult steps away from an elementary school. Um, I will briefly do in three points, say why we don't agree with this new construction site. Uh, first is traffic congestion. Our, uh, Foster Elementary has a front and a back entrance to this school, and both of those entrances are dead-end streets, which limited, limits, uh, vehicles, uh, being able to drop off students there. With this new construction, we're already looking at more congestion. Um, sometimes, uh, even myself, I have to be able to take my students only living two streets away, uh, twenty minutes earlier to school, just for them to get on, um, to school on time and not be late, um, cause, uh, because of other consequences that it could have. Um, so traffic congestion is probably the most to be concerned about. Um, also there, around that, um, our area, there's a lot of apartment complexes, so a lot of the street parking is taken by those residents. Also, uh, along with that, the Metro Link runs through the back of our school, which also kind of limits our exposure or are, are able to get to that school site. And my second point is ensuring the safety of our kids. Um, I know we can not, we could monitor who we sell alcohol to, um, especially the seven eleven, we could monitor who we sell alcohol, alcohol to, but we cannot monitor that person's actions. And being so close to a school, um, we don't know if those people have drug addictions or they're, um, if they have other occurrences with the law, or they might be sex offenders. And this type of, uh, businesses attracts a lot of homeless, already being a problem around that area in our school site. So, um, and for lastly, my point, uh, my last point, I want to talk about air quality. Um, I know that maybe at the beginning, we won't have a lot of effects on that, but in the long run, we're looking at students maybe having cough, uh, chest congestions, asthma, breathing problems because of the air quality that they're gonna be having. So maybe now we won't see that, but later in the future, through the experience of six years, my, my, my kids are preschool and a second grader, so they still have four years there. So maybe along the, long run, we'll be able to see those effects. So I just, um, will like you guys to reconsider that, um, think about the safety of our kids, uh, and the position that that puts us as parents to speak out for them. So thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, Mula? Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Montera Tanke. I am a student at Foster Elementary, I am in sixth grade, and I'm here to protest the seven eleven that is probably going to be built near our school. So I hear, right here I have my brother and some of his friends. I, next year will be attending middle school, but my brother here will be, he's barely in kindergarten, so he'll be going on to first and second grade, and with, if we build the seven eleven near our school, my brother and some of the, all of the students here may have some problems with like the gas, and I've noticed that there's, like right across the street or somewhere near, there's also another gas station, so we don't really need more, another gas station. And I'm, well, usually when I go to liquor's or seven elevens or anything like that, there's a lot of homeless there, so maybe that can cause us to go to maybe some lockdowns code red, and that would be very dangerous for our students here, since some, we can't trust some homeless, can some of them can be drug addicted, or they just stay there, and sometimes you don't know if you can trust them, and maybe they will come out round to our campus, and that will lead our school into a lockdown, code red, or maybe code yellow, either way that would still be dangerous for our students. And we need a, uh, the alcohol that will be given sometimes, like in seven elevens, you don't know if some, if like sometimes students will like see people with alcohol, and maybe sometimes students will be walking around in the back gate, they will be looking at maybe how like, uh, the seven eleven will be selling some drugs or like bad things that is not appropriate for our students here, so. And I come here to protest because this is something that may be, something that may be going wrong, and this is gonna be a change if this happens for all the kids that are here, so I just come here to say that this is, um, something that not, that might not be okay for our school and that, and for our students, thank you.
Hello, good evening, my name is Brenna Ramirez, I'm a fifth grade student at Foster Elementary School, and I came here to this meeting to protest because I don't think it's a good idea having a gas selling station and a seven eleven, because the seven eleven will be containing alcohol and certain things. because the 7-Eleven will be containing alcohol and certain things that us kids shouldn't be looking at, like we shouldn't be knowing about those things because we're just little kids. So it isn't a good idea because alcohol, first of all, it's a bad influence for us little, well, little kids and us too. And then for the gas setting station, we're like all of, all of our kids, we won't be able to go outside because of the air, the air, the condition of the air, because it would be so bad for us, because it would affect us in so many reasons. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
My name is Adriana Valdez. I am a parent at Foster. I have three young children. I have two, I'm sorry, this really upsets me, so I'm a little emotional, but I have three young children who love their school and really enjoy the community that it provides for them. If you've ever spent time there, the staff is incredible. The kids are, they know that they are so supported by their teachers, administrators, everyone that steps foot in there. It's an incredibly positive environment for our children to be in. And to have the news that there is plans to put yet another gas station within feet of the environment where our kids are on a daily basis is really upsetting to me and I'm here to protest it. I want to thank you for starting off with the prayer because I feel like only divine intervention can put together all of the things that were spoken of prior to us coming up here with the housing authority and with the art project that is being presented. I'm holding here a couple of plans. These are just two of at least a dozen plans that our gate students did ironically just like six or seven weeks ago for their proposal to what should go in that law. And a lot of the points that the artists touched on and that the housing authority guy touched on are points that they make and the engagement of their community and having pride for their neighborhood is a big part of what they envision. I pride myself and I don't reside in Baldwin Park, however, my children come because it is a wonderful dual language program that is taught there and I pride myself in having them there. I come from a family where a lot of my cousins are educators and people in different cities strive to reach the level of education the Baldwin Park Unified Offers and they do so much with so little resources at times that I would imagine that as the leaders of this city, you would want to take the same amount of pride into the district that you guys have. My, the kids have already spoken about, Elvia has already spoken about the health issues and the safety concerns. Another concern of mine is that there's no transparency with the district, it seems like. When I reached out to the district, there's nothing that they could really do or tell me and they had found out in, in just a short amount of notice. So I want you to really take our voices and listen to every word that's coming out of our mouths because we care. And you have an opportunity here to look at the projects that these students have presented and have created and make their visions a reality. This is an opportunity for you guys to do something amazing for them and all of the art that was being presented earlier could come from these children and these projects that they're already working on. And I urge you to really take the time to spend some time with these students and their ideas and the teachers and you'll be impressed as I am.
Thank you. What was your name again?
Adriana Valdez.
Adriana. Thank you, Adriana.
My name is Cassandra Moreno.
My name is Joanna Terrazas.
And we're here to protest about the environment. We don't want the 7-Eleven because they're going to be selling liquor and cigarettes and people could be drinking right there and smoking and we don't want that because some kids have medical problems. My friend Lesi has asthma and she could barely even run.
And also in school, we're supposed to be feeling safe, but while our 7-Eleven and the gas stations being added to our community, we're not going to be able to feel safe and we're going to be alerted when there's lockdown because we do not know what's going to be added to our environment and we're used to a type of environment where everyone's pleasant and nice and there's no drug addicts or there's no alcohol near us. But once that is added, we are going to be in a serious danger and we do not know what's expecting for us.
We don't want it, well, I already said why, but we, some students actually have like really bad medical problems and that could affect them. They could even go, end up going to the hospital.
Also with the cigarettes and the gas station, the pollution in our air is not going to be safe for us to go out and do our 45 minutes daily of P. We're not going to be able to feel safe when we go out to recess and most of all, we're not going to be able to feel safe when we get to school. We're going to feel in harm and we're not going to be able to let ourselves free as usual.
Thank you. That's all we wanted to say.
All right. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Silva Crossco and I am also a foster parent at Foster Elementary School. And like everybody else, we are here, of course, myself, I am here to protest the construction of the 7-Eleven. And basically, we're just here asking all of you to help us protect our children. Like everybody stated before, we don't know what the short term or the long term effects of the gas station can cause to our children, but not only our children. It can also affect our staff. And if something happens to our staff, that's going to cost our district thousands of dollars, dollars that could be spent on our kids, money that can be spent on our kids. And as we know, medical bills are very, very pricey. It's going to cost the district a lot of money and that money, again, could be going to our kids. So please help us and don't take away from our kids. We just saw a 30-minute presentation on housing. How about we do that? Instead of trying to, yes, of course, build a 7-Eleven that's going to cause, that's going to create revenue to the city, yes, it's going to cause revenue, but at what expense? And of course, like I said, it's at our children's expense. So we please ask you to please reconsider this. If we have to be coming every week, we have to be here, we will be here because we want to express our concern for our children. So we please ask to take that in reconsideration. Thank you.
My name is Rafael Lopez. This is actually my first time being at a council meeting here. I lived in Baldwin Park for about 20 years now and my concern today, reason why I came out today was earlier, my car was broken into. This is already, I believe, a few incidents that's already occurred in my neighborhood. I already had two of my vehicles already been hit, stolen. My parents' car's been broken into. Also, also want to address some of the issues that goes on in the street areas, the constant street racing. And you know, after speaking to the officer today that actually came to my home, he explained that there's a lack of police officers. So that's something that I'm just wondering, you know, what can be done in order to increase the number of officers? I'm also willing to, you know, speak with you guys in regards to, you know, any way that I can be, you know, of help, I'm willing to, you know, put the time and effort into it as well. I believe if you want something done, you know what, you gotta, you gotta put some work into it as well. So like I said, those are sort of my issues that are going on. Like, like I said, the thing for me that hurt me was that, you know, my car was broken into and I feel like violated. The reason why is because my work laptop was stolen, which is I work with mental health. So that prevented for me from today, from actually doing my job of going out there and helping, you know, people who actually need help. So there's a reason why that motivated me to be here today to see what can be done about that. It's, like I said, it's an ongoing thing. I feel like it's increasing problem in the city of Baldwin Park. You know, there's a lot of great things at Baldwin Park, but there's also things that need to be addressed as well. So like I said, my name is Rafael Lopez. If anything that I can do, my behalf to help on any way, I'm more than willing to put in the work and time. So thank you for hearing me out.
All right. Okay. Thank you. We're good. Go ahead. I'll ask him.
Good evening. Jason Mavat, resident of Baldwin Park, 43 years. Foster, you already know about it. I'm against it. Why? Please chief, you correct me if I'm wrong, California ABC states, 500 feet for alcohol. Isn't it be less than 300 feet from a school? Why are we doing that? It needs to be, you can have multiple things put there, but 7-Eleven with a gas station? My daughter has asthma. We walk by there, I'm not going to be running her all the way over to the nearest hospital, which is Kaiser, because of the fumes or if possible, gang bangers, druggies, homeless, whatever, want to try and rob you? No. One of the other people that was here, his wife's purse was stolen from the gym. Your crime rate's going to go up multiple times because of the 7-Eleven. Three stores I could think off of hand right now, you could go buy liquor at, in, within yards, Walmart, Food for Less, Target. Why do we need another one right there? Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else wish to speak? Oh, Margarita.
Margarita Vargas. This is the first meeting that I attend with a new city council members, a new city clerk. So I'm glad to be here and I congratulate you. But mayor, I just want to tell you again, that you need to follow the agenda. I don't know if it's illegal or not, but when you do that report from close session before your calls to order and vocation, placement lines and roll call, how can it be in the minutes? So I told you too many times, but I think now that you have council member Hernandez, he's really knowledgeable and how to do a meeting, and Alejandro, I miss council member Avila, that she was a city clerk, and you have a new city clerk. I know you and Mr. Pacheco don't believe in rubber rules, but it has to be some kind of order and it's a step needed when I'm seeing the agenda and you got to report from close session, you haven't, like today was 15 minutes before you opened the meeting and it was like another meeting, presentation, I mean, it was somebody that spoke and all that. So I know a habit is really hard to break when you're doing it for 20 years, but you have a lot of people that can help you and remind you to do it and you have the agenda in front of you. So I'm just asking you as a favor to do that.
Thank you.
For me to be happy.
All right. Thank you.
But I have another, another thing. You know, that presentation about the art is really nice and, and I like it a lot because I'm an artist myself, but we have a big problem, more urgent, that gang violence. I knew when that young man was killing in Palm and La Rica, it was not going to be the end of it. Now we have another one, 17-year-old killed on, on Alep and, and you know how it goes, one from here, one from there. And you know, my son, he works really hard when he was a mayor to get rid of that gang violence, graffiti and prostitution. And we were living real nice for so many years. I don't want to be a witness of starting violence again. So I hope that police department, they worked so hard for that when he was a mayor, that we have enough officers that knowledgeable of the, the gang problem like Officer Kovac, he was one of the best. So I hope that you are able to handle this because I just heard my friend that she wants to move from Baldwin Park because of that. I don't know where she's going, there is not going to be violence, but you know, I don't want Baldwin Park to be one of those cities. Thank you.
All right. At this point, let me, let me go ahead and I want to start out with, I think, Mr. Lopez, did he leave? Mr. Lopez? Mr. Lopez and also Mr. Robert Torres, not certain if they're still here. I know that the police chief has indicated that they've been working with Mr. Torres. So why don't I have, chief, we're going to assign someone to also work with Mr. Lopez regarding the theft that has occurred. So just, so you understand, okay? You know what?
I want to hook the officer down the screen.
Yeah. Okay. We're going to, you'll get together with, with an officer. And let me just also begin, first of all, recognizing the students from Foster. And I've been invited to Foster many educate, on many occasions, I've been there. Excellent, beautiful school and excellent teachers. And I want to specifically thank and recognize the young students that are here. When I was your age, there's no way I could do that. So I want to first of all emphasize and let everyone know, I'm going to walk you through the little process so that everyone knows, okay? You hear me on that? So little process and, and bear with me. First of all, let me recognize the police chief Pope and thank you for being here, Baldwin Park Unified School District. And also Mr. Serco, the risk manager, your last name is, that's all right. Thank you. Thank you, first of all, for being here, okay? Now, so that everyone knows, I'm going to explain the history. In May 23rd, there was a planning commission held. So I want to work with you and I know the council will too, but we're going to have to see how we could work this out, but we need to know the history of it, the archive part. May 23rd, there was a planning commission here. The Baldwin Park Unified School District was sent a note prior to the 23rd, letting them know that the 7-Eleven itself was going to be a proposed project in that specific little medium island. Are we clear on that one? So the Baldwin Park Unified School District was sent a letter. They in turn could have been here, could have opposed and could have easily appealed the process. Now that's May 23rd. Two days ago, the Baldwin Park Unified School District administrative level contacted the, the city of Baldwin Park protesting. Well, you should have, you should have informed the residents. Now 300, it required, we're required by law to make sure that individuals went in that 300 square feet area are also notified by mail. That is the actual law. You guys with me on that one? Okay. So just because I'm going to walk and we're going to see what we can do here. So I want to make sure that that is very clear. The school district should have done something on the 23rd, informed everyone that the actual public hearing was being held here so that they could have easily appealed it. Now, where are we at this point? That parcel, that property is private property. So anyone has the right to propose a project and if it meets the requirements of the city ordinance, then they're allowed to do that. And in this case, of course, the specific individuals within that area were forewarned of what was happening. So that's why a planning commission was held. That plan commission is another commission that sits here and they will discuss and bring, allow people to come up and speak whether, if you oppose or support the actual project. Now, what can we do at this point? Because that's already, it's already gone through that actual process and they met every, every, every ordinance from the city of Baldwin Park. Think that we would probably do is address this with the air quality management, the AQMD. That would be the next step. Is that clear to everyone?
Yes.
So that's, and you know what? All attend and I'm sure some of the council members will also tend to see what we can do. Where, we live in Baldwin Park. I've been here since 79. Council members have lived here probably a lot, many more years than I have. So there's a vested interest because we're residents of Baldwin Park and everything that affects you affects us. And I know the congestion that occurs there. I drive to there in the morning. It takes me about a good 15 minutes, you know, just to go through that particular area to jump on the freeway. And yes, is it congested with vehicles parked all over the place? Absolutely. We know that. We all know that. And it's important for us to, excuse me, please, excuse me. Yeah. So it's important for us to be able to recognize. So I think that the next step at this point would be for, to find out when the actual meeting, and I will request that we inform the Baldwin Park Unified School District. So make sure that you guys are alert with them and we'll put in our website when the next AQMD meeting. Let the CO talk about that briefly.
Um, yes, mayor. Thank you. I understand that the school district has appealed to AQMD and it's not known yet if there will be a hearing, but if there is, we will notify, we will communicate with the school district and notify the city council. I did also want to just set a few facts about the project that's being proposed. It says not a liquor store. There will only be sales of beer and wine. Singles are not allowed to be sold and it's not allowed to be consumed on site. This is to be taken home or taken off-site to be consumed at another place. It is limited to only 3%, the, the display of beer and wine is limited to only 3% of the area, so it's only going to be a very small part of the store. And they are required to also comply with all of the ABC, which is the state agency that license alcohol and beer sales. They'll be required to comply with, and become licensed with them and comply with all of their requirements. They are required to comply with all of air quality management district requirements, which is also another state agency. which is also another state agency that regulates gas stations.
Real quick, let me just, just say so, so, because I was unaware that, okay, so the school district has appealed to the AQMD.
I understand. They sent a letter to the AQMD appealing that, and I believe asking for a hearing. It's unknown yet if there will be a hearing. Also, this was approved by the planning commission. This, this item never came to the city council, because it would never come unless someone went to the planning commission and appealed within 10 days of their findings. If it were appealed, it would've come to the city council, but I just wanted to point out that that never happened.
Yeah, and then just let everyone know, had, had the school district been here and, and actually opposed and appealed the process, then it would come over to the city council, and everyone would have been notified, so you come here, as you are right now, opposing the actual project. The reason, it's important for everyone to know the actual process itself. So I think that the next step, the next step is to, is to be in touch, and we'll make sure that we're in touch with the school district, to find out if in fact the AQMD is going to set an appeal, and, and I will definitely be there, I'm certain that council members will also be there, so that we can appeal it. But, but please note that there was an actual process, and on part of school district, someone dropped the actual ball itself, and that's the unfortunate part of what occurred. Someone, and the administrator, a letter was sent.
So Mayor, I'd like to add something to that.
Yes.
I'm, thank you for the foster parents and students that came to speak out. I, I'm very proud of you for coming out here and trying to protect everything that you work for, parents and the students, to make sure that you guys are safe. So we're gonna work on this to see what, what can be done. However, I also wanna look at what can we do in the future to make sure this doesn't happen again. I understand a letter was sent, however, we need to follow up with the phone call and make sure that the district does receive this type of information, because a simple letter, I mean, letters, tons of letters coming to the district. We need to make sure they are getting our communication. And also, a letter could-
Public communication is closed, sorry about that.
I have something to say.
Sorry, sorry.
I have something to say. You're gonna stop me from just saying what I have to say.
This is, this is public communication.
You could've sent a letter at the beginning of the planning process to the students and the school as well.
Totally out of order.
It doesn't matter, I can say what I can say. You're elected by the people of the city.
I understand, yes, that is correct.
I can come and say what I have to say.
Okay, I, I understand.
So all I'm saying to add to what she's, she pointed out, is that maybe in the future your process should be when the planning commission is gonna be started, you send a letter then, not 30 days before it's gonna expire for a chance for us to do anything.
This is incredible.
This is something for you to consider. It is incredible. It's incredible, and I'm here to tell you how incredible it is. And it's incredible if you allow this to go up.
Let, let me, first of all, say, let me just, first of all, say again. You know what? You know what? Let me just, let me just say, I, you know, I could have easily stopped you, but I did not, and I respect what you're saying here, to make it clear. Hold on. Had I done that, had I done that at the school district, I probably would've been tossed right out. Now, I've done that here before, because there are, there are actual laws that govern this local municipal government, and we cannot, we cannot simply think, you know, think that you just come and easily do that, because think, this is a community, hold on, this is a community. That, I understand, I understand what you're saying. I understand, I understand what you're saying, but it has, this, this is a governed meeting. This is a governed meeting. This is a governed meeting. Okay? Just so that you understand. And let me try that at the school district, I'll tell you what, let's you and I try that at the school district, and you'll see what transpired. Both you and I are gonna be popped right out. So, okay, so let me, let me just go back. So the letter was sent prior. It was sent prior. I don't, how long before did we send that?
The letter was sent out to everybody, including the school district, within 300 feet, more than 10 days before the meeting. And I did also want to-
Please stop. I'm gonna ask you to please stop.
I did-
I'm begging, I am begging, I am begging to please stop. But please.
I also wanted to let you know, we did meet with the school district today, and one of the things we talked about is communications in the future, so that this doesn't happen again. We're going to put them on an email list, and they will receive each and every planning commission agenda that goes out. So whether or not the project's even 300 feet from the school, they will still get a notice, and they will be aware of every project that's coming forth.
Can I say something really quick?
Yes.
This is to our audience and to our council here. I, I'm your former city clerk, and the public is allowed three minutes to, to speak on whatever subject you, you'd like to speak on, and we respectfully will listen to your, to your concerns. You can, like you did today, many of you can come up and speak of the same subject, and we will listen to you. However, with all due respect, you do have three minutes to express your, your needs, and if you need more, then have more people come up. And then when the mayor addresses the, the public and addresses the council, your three minutes are up unfortunately. So, so if you can have the respect for the council, we're definitely gonna have it for you. So if we can do that, and maybe at the next meeting, if you wanna come and continue to speak, we'd really appreciate it, but let's be respectful towards each other. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, at this point, what, what I, again, make sure that we contact the, the, the school district, and I know both Alejandro and I, and she was talking about, about that conversation we had yesterday, to find out when to get that, if that letter is received, and in fact, when the actual AQMD hearing, if in fact, is going to be held. Now, can, can the public request that it be held, or is it up to the AQMD legal council? I'm just curious.
I believe it's discretionary with the AQMD.
So it is discretionary?
I believe it is, Your Honor.
Okay, so I, I, I think somehow we should push to have an actual, an actual hearing so that everyone here, including us, could be there. So, so let's do this. Somehow, legal council or, or, or CEO, let's see how we can get together with the administrators over at the school district, so we could ha, make that happen.
Mayor?
Yes, oh, council member, sorry about that.
Let me just say, I wanna, I wanna thank all of you for being here. I, I appreciate that you bring your concerns here. You know, we represent all of you and all of your concerns. We wanna protect your students, wanna make sure they're in a healthy environment, and wanna do everything that we can to do that. And I just like to also bring that, let's talk to 7-Eleven at the corporate level, and let's tell them about our concerns too. And I think that they'll listen to us, let's talk about maybe they don't put a gas station, they limit how they do their alcohol, and, you know, let's make sure that we work with them to either move the store or, or do something different, but we're not happy with what they're doing. So we can give them that option, but that is private property, so it's, it's kinda hard to tell them what to do, but we can give them our opinions. We can go to them and, and do that. So I'd like to direct staff to communicate with 7-Eleven, let them know the concerns that were brought here, and what they could do to their, if they can't move the store to another location, maybe they could modify it to, to satisfaction of, of our school, of our school students, more importantly. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Very, real quick, thank you, council member Ricardo Pacheco. Now, this is what I wanna do. We will send a letter to AQMD on behalf of the local municipal government, council members, to have a hearing and to have the hearing here, which means they'll sit here and we'll sit there, okay? So that's, that's what we'll do, okay? Now, and, and, and once again, and once again, I'm sorry. I mean, I know the frustration, I, I'm, I'm-
It wasn't my head.
No, 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 that's why I'm, no, there's no, that's why I'm apologizing. Look, and I just wanna say, frustration, yes, I hear you. I definitely hear you. So that's what we're going to do. We're gonna work together, and we're gonna invite them here, CEO, to have the actual public hearing here, so that means we're gonna start over, okay? And we get that opportunity, okay? And sorry about that. Thank you.
And we will make sure everybody is notified, so that you can attend that meeting, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, everyone. Okay, at this point, we're gonna go into consent calendar. We have items, one through, oh boy, we've got a lot today. One through, one through 12, actually, yeah, that is true. One through 12. Councilmember wishing to pull any item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez?
Can we do number eight, please?
Number eight? Okay, number eight. All right, at this point, if no one else is wishing to pull an item, I will go ahead and make a motion to move consent calendar, with the exception of number eight. That is my motion.
Second.
Second, seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See, none, so move. At this point, item A, which is consideration for approval of amendment number, number one, to design services agreement, DSA, with Southern California Regional Rail Authority, for improvement to their, to rail safety crossing improvements, project quiet zone area ready come at Pacific Avenue and Bogart, and approval of amendment number four to the professional service agreement, et cetera. At this point, I'll give it over to Councilmember Hernandez. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have actually no issue in regards to this particular item, but I do wanna make sure that as we're looking at the quiet zones, that I know I've expressed some of my concerns and thoughts, is if we can, instead of doing a parallel track, a linear track, no pun intended, that we're able to try to expedite the rest of the quiet zone improvements that we have, because I believe this is just one of four, if I'm correct?
That's correct.
So if we can do that and try to expedite the other planning process for our residents, because it is a very lengthy process in which, you know, again, our local residents and still schoolchildren deserve the utmost priority if we can in regards to this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you, council. Thank you, council member. So at this point, I wanna entertain a motion to move item consent, excuse me, item number eight. I'll make a motion to pass.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, any objections? See, none, so move. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to, we'll go over to the successor agency. Okay, the successor agency, okay, I'm gonna move for consent calendars, consent, excuse me. All right, sorry about that. At this point, I will move for the consent successor agencies, and that is my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See, none, so move. So it was seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. There was no objections. All right, so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and move for adjournment of the successor agency.
Second.
Any objections? See, none, so move. All right, so at this point, all righty. So at this point, we're gonna go to reports of officers, which, 13, which is approval and adoption resolution number 2018-035, entitled, "A Resolution of City Council of the City of Baldwin Park Appointing Representatives and Alternative Official Representatives of the City and Review the Appointment Members to Established Committee and Approve." Can we move this over to Jan, to January the 16th, please?
Yes, definitely.
All right, so that's my motion.
Mayor, but I, I think some of, some of them have to be chosen, otherwise, potentially the last, you know, the other council persons could attend, continue to-
Which ones?
Well, like, like the Foothill Transit Authority.
Well, let's pick on the 16th, we're just gonna miss one.
You wanna go there? Okay.
Yeah, all right, so there's a mo, who's second? Oh, Alejandro. Councilmember Avila, second it, and any objections? All right, see, none, so move. All right, the next one, we'll go over to the city council, which is, Mayor requests council discussion direction regarding options for state of the, can we bring this to the following meeting, everyone?
What is it again?
The, I know the Business Association, if they're gonna be involved, they do need, they are asking for an answer as soon as possible. I don't believe they were able to attend tonight.
Yeah, let, let's move it over then, and we'll bring it back.
Okay.
All right, and then the next one, CEO requests council direction to draft a letter for the mayor and council signature to the county board supervisor, requesting that the fee increase be delayed until such time as study can be performed on the operation efficiency and Department of Animal Care and Control and solutions to be put into place, improve productivity, accountability, and reduce. Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, yeah, and our fees are, are looking like they're gonna quadruple over the next four years.
That's crazy.
There have been some news reports about possible problems with accountability and productivity there, and we would like to send those letters out. We're coordinating with about 17 other cities in Los Angeles County who have the same concerns.
Astronomical, that's, that's crazy. All right, so we'll definitely send that letter. The next one is, CEO requests that the, give a direction to work with Caltrans and business owners to have a sound wall removed from lower near the Home Depot, Choppin Center Marriott. Yes, please. Thank you. We'll give you that direction.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so at this point, council members wishing to share anything?
Uh, Mayor, I would just like, at our next council meeting, to give an update on the Caltrans off the, off the off-ramp. I know there's some improvements, but by then, I would like to see more, you know, where we're at. I don't wanna back off on that, I wanna continue to put the pressure we need to let that gets completed. Although they have done some good work, and they are moving forward, I, I still think it's too slow, and they really need to move forward on the landscaping and all the other work that they've promised us they would do, all right, with that. Uh, thank you. Oh, just one last item, real quick, Mayor. We, and I know that there was issues brought up earlier about the handling of the agenda and, and that type of thing, so I just, I think it's important to recognize that we do follow the, the rules of the common law of the state of California. When you come out of close session, you're expected to report on the activities of close session, and we did that, and then we follow the agenda as it is posted. So I don't, I don't see any issue with the way we do the agenda. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank, thank you very much. Yes, at this one, Councilmember Avila.
First of all, I also wanna send my condolences to the family member of that gentleman that was shot.
Yeah, that's right.
And based on that, I want to ask a report of the Police Department. I know we have a gang unit. I, I'd like to know a little more about what their hours of, of operation are. I know in the past, they used to work on weekends and in the evenings, and I know because I did many ride-alongs with them. I think our gang unit needs a lot more presence in our city, because there has been a lot of shootings. I also would like to work more with the school district, more of a report on the, on our city side, on the police side. What are we doing with our school district? In the past, we also had a lot of preventive work with the school district police and the city police, where they would provide programs and we'd go back and forth with them. So I'd like to see what we're doing with that, and if we're not doing anything, if we can move forward, and maybe some ideas from you gentlemen, to see what we can do to work with the school police, so we can start working with, I believe it starts at the junior high level, correct me if I'm wrong, but when I was working the junior high level, that's where we did a lot of the prevention, working with the gang unit and city police and school police, providing presentations for our parents. So I'd like to see more of that, see if we can bring it back. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just wanna wish everyone a happy holiday and a safe holiday. Thank you.
Yes, thank, thank you, thank you very much. So at this point, I'll go ahead and move for adjournment of the city council, and I wanna dedicate this to our chief, Mike Taylor, for the 37 years, the dedication and commitment to the city of Baldwin Park. Chief, thank you very much. So we dedicate this on his behalf. All right. All right, so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and move for adjournment. Hello?
Second.
Oh, okay, second by who?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, any objections? See, none, so move. This point, I'd like to open up the Finance Authority, and so Finance Authority, we have the consent calendars, I'll move for the Treasury Report, that is my motion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. At this point, I will move for, for adjournment.
Second.
Second, any objections? Second, any objections? See, none, so move. This point, we'll move over to the housing authority, I'd like to go ahead and move for consent calendars, items one and two.
Second.
And who, second, council member Ricardo Pacheco, any objections? See, none, so move. At this point, I'd like to move for adjournment.
Second.
Second by council member Ricardo Pacheco. At this point, no objections, thank you very much. Viva Ballpark and Happy New Year.